So how many events have been done, three events so far this year?
Well, every- everybody has pretty much had at least one contest. Softball ended up with a scrimmage that wasn't an official game. But everybody we've hosted tennis, we've been on the road for tennis. Baseball played today and at this game.
You're making me tomorrow.
Yeah, we just, we were supposed to go to Perron tomorrow for track. They had to cancel because they're not ready, so we put one together quick. And then we were able to get eight teams in there right away. Most of the teams that were scheduled to go to Perron came. So we'll try and get that in tomorrow. Sounds like we can get a junior high baseball game in tomorrow. Starbucks Field.
Is it ready?
It sounds bad. I almost feel like we should play softball tomorrow because I don't know if we're going to play this week, so I was like...
Yeah, did that field be ready? I may have to... Somebody's canceled somewhere this looking for a game.
Yeah.
But I called six different umpire associations in the last ten minutes. I was hoping his dad...
Let me guess.
He just said, "Nope." It was, it was so quick. "Sorry, nope, nope." Not just your dad, but everybody. So I finally got all of somebody from walking. Everybody in my neighborhood are planning tomorrow. Whatever day that can be helpful. Or wherever you are. Alright, let's call this meeting in order. We'll sing the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, in the name of the Lord. With liberty and justice for all. Well, to get the meeting started, maybe we should take home the silence in lieu of what's happened in our community over the weekend. Alright. Looking for, uh, motions approved agenda? I'll make my motion. Legred? Second by? All second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Alright, visitor comments? Do you have any visitors tonight that would like to make any comments before we get going? Any visitors tonight that would like to make any comments tonight? Any visitors that would like to make any comments tonight? Alright, moving on. Special recognition and honor.
Uh, Mr. Vice Chair, members of board, tonight we're gonna have our principals. Principal's Day is coming up on May first. We'd like to recognize our district's principals, Nate, Sarah, Scott, and Susan. Uh, for all the work they do to keep our schools going. I'd also like to express a special thank you to all of our building grounds crew that kept our, you know, our buildings open, our parking lots going. And I just, you know, you think about all the evening events we have and all the work that, you know, between Phil and, you know, we never had to like... It wasn't because, uh, it wasn't because we couldn't get the job done. Uh, it was really the weather canceling, so I just want to recognize those, those group tonight.
Yeah, well done. It was a long winter. Alright, moving on. Uh, entertain a motion for approval of the March twenty-seventh. Special Board Meeting and the March twenty-seventh Regular School Board Meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by A. Reinkman. Are there any seconds?
All second.
Second by Legred. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to summary bills.
Hey, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna make the recommendation that we approve. Uh, district checks in total of one million, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-one cents. Uh, we're gonna accept grant definitions to get to two thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars. And, uh, I'll turn it over to Drew to kind of highlight a couple. You see there's some transportation bills in there, uh, but I'll turn it over to Drew.
Yeah, so, uh, just being that we had a late board meeting in March, followed by an earlier one here in April. There, the interim checks that we wrote between there isn't, uh, very large. The ones that will be running tomorrow, um, we have our health insurance bill, the health partners, Palmer Bus. That, uh, first one is for our contract payments that we make throughout the year for them. Um, after that, the seventy-nine thousand dollar one to Palmer Bus is for the monthly trips and, uh, different billings that we get for usage. Those are the real significant, uh, dollar amount bills that we have that are to be run tomorrow. Looking at the interns that we wrote, uh, in the last couple of weeks. There isn't really anything really out of the ordinary that stood out to me looking through it.
Is it safe to say, "I would share from the entire board, right now, uh, revenue to expenditures, we are crunching every budget and every code because right now we know that we're gonna be... We're sitting in the black. And our goal is to be at zero at the June thirtieth. Um, you've met your fund balance targets, and so we're taking a look at capital purchases we can make. We're looking at, you know, whatever it might be, uh, to make sure we're positioned if we can pre-purchase for next year. So, correct?
Yeah.
And that's not just, that's not COVID, but you'll talk that a little bit. So... Uh, next we got consider, yeah, that was the one, one thirty-eight. So I recommend approval tonight.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, I'll, uh, entertain anybody that would like to make a motion.
Make a motion.
A second.
Motion in second. All those signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Number eight, Superintendent's report. Just quickly on the investment part, there's really not significant part here. Draw some interest, and that's not, no big issue. You're gonna see on the food service support, you're sending about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the good. We are, uh, aggressively going after any outstanding balances. Right now, I think we do have it under like forty-five hundred bucks, which, you know, it's on, it's actually really good compared to where we have been. Sometimes we've been up to thirty-one thousand, especially with free, you know, free meals. I'm sure you just want to get that as close to zero as possible. So that's good. Revenue and expenditures, you know, your, your expenditures are at the sixty-nine percent. Your revenues are, you're gonna get into second disbursement of your, you know, employee coming up from accounting here in the very near future. Superintendent report quick. Uh, Roland's up to twelve seventy-eight. Uh, we're up two kids from the last board meeting, so we're at twelve seventy-eight. Uh, on that piece, you can see the early child, there were really no change, so that's good. And we are actually up, um, um, twelve seventy-eight. We're actually, we started school year, went back to September, we were actually like twelve sixty-eight. We're up ten kids overall for the year, so that's, that's really good going into April, so... Um, grants, I'll share this with everybody out there, but, uh, I did a breakdown of all of our COVID funds. So I'm gonna be going to us, you know, like, kind of status of the district, to all of the buildings, and Drew and I won't be going. But you can see we're sending out about five hundred and fifty, five hundred and fifty thousand dollar COVID money remaining. You can see here that like seventy-five percent of all expenditures have gone to, uh, staff. I can tell you right now, zero percent's gone to any administrative staff. So that's all teachers, paras, cooks, custodians. Um, so that's that piece. There's your summary of bills, there's your interest rate, there's our revenue and expenditures, you can take a look at that. Um, tonight, uh, you're gonna get a presentation in the high school, Phil's gonna do a presentation. Two sections are out, we'll go through that here shortly. Um, tonight unfortunately, as you do each year, uh, this month is you have to, you unfortunately have to, you know, let some staff go because these are all grant positions, so we cover those. And that's these people here unfortunately. We have applied for the grant, we have every reason to believe we'll probably get the grant. We don't know the exact amount of money we'll get, but we'll get there, we'll know. So you're gonna be terminating some employees tonight because they're on grant dollars. And then, like I said, we're very likely gonna hire them back. The MOU tonight, you're gonna have to look at, we, you know, we were approached by Central Square, they wanna sponsor an art position halftime. So we're actually gonna look at, uh, three more hours of art for, so our summer graders get no art right now. We're gonna get two more hours of art for really about thirty grand next year, uh, max. So we're gonna have that. So I'd recommend approval of that. We're gonna, you're gonna see a bid for green, green lawns. You can see the consent calendar on these hires and resignations or retirement, and I'll cover those in a little bit. And then staffing, as far as I know, we're gonna hire, we're gonna interview for a fourth grade teacher on Thursday. We had like sixteen applications, which was great, uh, for internal, uh, so we hired that on Thursday. Otherwise, I think we're full for next year. This is the COVID money I already talked about, so we have a breakdown there. We've kind of closed supply budgets just because, um, you know, if you get sixty-two dollars a one or forty-five dollars a one, we put that together and then we bring it back. Principals are all putting their capital expenditures in here now if they want to get next year. Trying to make sure that if there's any staff demand requests for the rest of the year, we know what they are, so we can be barged it out. And then post Easter, we're just trying to make sure all the testing that happened in April is done. All the field trips are accounted for, and then we're getting all our summer projects. And then the transition is Scott comes over to the high school, or to the middle school, Sue takes over the elementary. We hired an early childhood coordinator. We were actually very lucky, we stole a person from Ruten. Um, she's got a lot of experience, we're pretty excited about having her. I put a plot in the legislature, there's a lot of new parts over the next, you know, month to know what we're gonna be at. My personal feeling is, um, I know the, the, the state legislature's really potted a bunch of money they're gonna pump into education. You know, I would quote a fellow superintendent, I totally compare with him. This might be the most, this might be the worst legislative session, definitely in my time in education that we've had. They can tell it all as five and five, but it'll probably cost us eight and eight, if not ten and ten, to fund all the mandates they have. It's disastrous. There's been nothing to fix, uh, the, the retirement. And they, they'll talk about how much money they're gonna give to schools, but on the backside, they're gonna talk about all the rules. If, if all the bills go through as we speak, we'll be SOV within three years. So, we'll see how that goes. Um, transportation, we've got some bus drivers, but we're okay. Uh, Sky's working on spring concerts, you know, this is the person you're gonna, we're gonna recommend hiring tonight. Uh, Sarah, you know, we had Career Day, and it does huge success in the secondary building. And, you know, Nick and Tiffany did a great job with that, MCA start, uh, a lot of pieces there. Uh, Winn doing a lot of curriculum work, also Winn presented to the, uh, um, oh, uh, I'm trying to get her name. She went over, uh, she did an interview, uh, with Habitat Humanity or somebody to get some extra funds, which is great. Drew's working on finalizing the budget and getting a staffing spreadsheets for next year, so we can start, uh, we'll revise our budget for this year and build for next year. Mark's got the press boxes all up and running with all the wifi, so it's good to go. And then we're getting quotes on renewals, 'cause, you know, one of the things that gets kind of a little misleading, and the reason we're gonna probably go ask for more money in tech is, you know, over half of the tech budget is on renewals, a lot of our curriculum, um, a lot of the consumables we use every year, uh, comes out of that. And then, uh, we're starting to see an uptick in headlights, so everybody needs to be aware of all the protocols, so we're gonna be going through that. And then Jeremy's been working pretty hard, uh, we got, I think I said the board, I'll show some pictures here later, some leaks at, at Winn. And then, we are scheduled to replace the iron frustration system on this campus. And then the fire, you know, we had some things we need to fix in the part, uh, fire marshals, so we're working on that piece. Lunch with Heroes coming up here on May fifth, so that piece, and then, uh, like I said, they're working on fund balances. Bill'll talk about activities in a bit, uh, Bill's talking about community ads, so we have Laker Legends of Summers all staff. Um, just an update for the board, uh, Kingdom Kids is now Lakes Area Enrichment Center. We met with the architects, so this would be all new. This is the current first grade classroom, so this would be the, you know, the west end, uh, and right here would be that yellow house. So this would be a new, and then they wanted a four classroom, so that's where architects came back. So that, you know, this is the elementary, this is the yellow house, this is what they're looking at, building new. You know, we had a good meeting, and I said, "Hey, it's kind of probably..." Um, so we had another architect, we'll get the media center, we're gonna hear more about that on Friday. And then I'll get the facilities committee and compare the two. But, you know, we brought their architect in, it says it's kind of, it's gotta look more like this. If you're gonna build a new daycare center here and consume four classrooms, you know, we're gonna need three classrooms here. This ECS is, ECS D rooms are undersized. We do have two open classrooms right now, like here, and, you know, like here and here. Um, but, you know, really looking at new parking lot, new drop off, drop off zone. And so they're going back to redesign this and get some price tags and construction, uh, timeline. So I just want to share that out, and like I said, we're gonna, we're gonna learn more about this and this, and look at those two options. And then there's some regional daycare meetings coming back up. These are leaks over at Starbucks, so this is walking into the gym on the west doors. I'm happy to report, you know, so you can see there's a lot of leakage over there. Good news is, none of them got on the gym floor. This is a softball, so it's, uh, a lot of leaky, leaky tiles, so good thing is, you know, we were able to get in there and get everything kind of cleaned up. This is down in the basement, it's not terrible, but, you know, there is gonna be some leakage there. Uh, this is that preschool off the head start room, some leakage there, but not super terrible. And I just share that's, uh, you know, um, the building's starting to settle. So even the stairs coming off the gym are, were just noisy, more settling. And then finally, um, there's some more little leaks, so... And then of course, I, I mentioned this to Phil, we've got a lot of pickleball racket, rac-, uh, racket marks on the floor, so I'll take a look at that. And we had a great, I think, Day of Faith, four twelve here. Uh, I thought it was a very highly, you know, it's a legally thing you can do. And then I just showed you kind of the, the end of the year legislature stuff, this kind of worked out, so... Other than that, I thought I'd just share all that, uh, that completes that piece, and then... Yeah, I think that's it.
Thank you, Superintendent Rankin. Any questions? From anybody? Alright, thanks again. Uh, moving on to number nine. Accepting donations. Yeah, tonight, uh, all the... Second. Alright. Motion to approve, any second?
All second.
Second is received, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number ten, presentation from the high school.
Thank you, Board, for having us. Chris, I'll kind of start it.
Yep.
You can jump in whenever you need. Um, uh, Chris Bennett is obviously here in representation for, for our high school leadership team. We have Tammy Williams-Curdle as part of our leadership team, Jason Weber, Heidi Colzine, Chris Bennett, Chris Lines, David Ninge, Matt Maher. I'd be ready to say Trevor Soloway was a part of our leadership, um, team this year. And we meet on a, on a monthly basis, sometimes, uh, every two weeks on some of our months. And we're just talking about what we can do to better our kids' experience in high school. I think we got a really solid team, we've been together since I've come, uh, come aboard a few years back. Um, so we, uh, we work, we work fairly well, uh, together. And, and it's, it's nice to know that the group can, can tell me when they think what I'm saying, they, they don't necessarily agree with. And I can tell them the same thing, and we can really work and hash some things out and, and, uh, get some things accomplished. And then if you go to the next slide, Mr. Rankin, our student leadership team still meets on a monthly basis. We've missed a couple, uh, this year due to weather and just scheduling issues. But three kids per class meet, uh, with myself every month, uh, and we just look at school culture. A lot of conversation over Laker time and intervention time, a lot of conversation over student mental health. Vaping is always an issue at the high school level, and what we can do to, uh, make improvements on that. They've also kind of been part of the, the role as leaders, obviously taking some initiative on our domestic violence walk. Um, Mr. Johnsrood and our student council rep, David Ninge, uh, led, uh, a charge with some of our students. And they, they polled the student leadership team from the Minnesota State High School League Together to Make a Difference Conference. So those kids, uh, met on two different occasions, correct?
Correct.
Um, where they're meeting with high school kids all across the, across the state, um, with, uh, with that initiative. And then collaborating with, with the student council, just trying to get everybody's, um, opinion, advice on what we can do to make our culture and our student body, um, improvements. So, next slide please. Um, some of the happenings this year with some of our new classes that we're, we're rolling with this year. Digital media, obviously, we, we added that class with the addition to our, our, uh, uh, scoreboards in the, in the gymnasium. So that class is really geared towards, uh, working with all the media, working with all the nuances with, uh, with the scoreboards. Robotics down in the CTE wing with, uh, Mr. Gugusberg is teaching a section of robotics with about twenty-two kids in it. It continues to grow, um, we al-, we already have a, a opening for, to make it into an activity as well, so that's exciting.
We did get a, we did get an email this week that we know the vendor was, you know, looking to make a sizable forty thousand dollar investment if we would get a robotics team started. And Aguard up in Allen.
Yep. Um, when we discussed this as a leadership team about what we were gonna present today, and I'll turn this over to Mr. Bennett on kind of what this means to the high school group, but, but the, the sense of normalcy, and maybe, maybe...
I think we just noticed a lot, we took our first round of state tests back in COVID, and I'm a science teacher, so I obviously take offense when I see our scores down low or when we had kids back in class that were in a regular schedule, they were in a groove, you know, and I don't know, our preliminary scores right now were like fifteen to twenty percent higher than they were, uh, in the tenth grade at least, and that's usually the grade that I worry about, about getting them focused, and do they take it seriously or not? And I think, you know, it was really nice to see them get into class, I'm watching them as they're, you know, going through the tests, whatever, and they're locked in, kids tested longer. Usually it's, used to be a race, how fast can you get your MCA, MCA test done? The kids just, they changed that mentality a little bit, which was awesome, so I hope that continues for all of the MCA's. We had a little bit of test fatigue, we did flip science, which I was just interested to see what happens if we did that first or whatever, and it helped, but we'll, we'll see how that goes, so...
And then obviously, uh, we're back with some of our trips. We just, uh, returned some students from Washington DC with our, uh, history group and our, uh, global languages crew, uh, went to Puerto Rico. So we're back to that, kind of offering those, those activities for our kids as in dances. Uh, we, we finally had a kind of a normal homecoming dance this year that was, uh, highly attended, pet fests and donkey ball. If you were all a part of that, that was a, a smashing success as well. Um, it's one thing we've added with our, you know, now that we're back to normal, we're still seeing some of that, uh, some of the, the issues that we're running into post-COVID. Um, student mental health, the, the struggles are, are absolutely real. And we've been really trying to, to manipulate and change our intervention time to, to make it very valuable. And, and we kicked off a, a new Laker time, uh, each, each day, twenty minutes a, a day we get for our Laker time. And we, we really are honing in on our, our struggling kids that, that are, uh, struggling with, with homework completion and struggling with tests and quizzes and things like that. So kids that are really struggling, teachers put them on a list, put them in this new, uh, Laker time. So it's a, it's a lot more supervised. Uh, we are, I mean, a lot of the intent is to incentivize that Laker time. That's a time that they can hang with their, with their friends and just more of a, a brain break. Um, and so we're incentivizing it a little bit more by get your homework done, get your grades up, and you can have some of that, a little bit more flexible free time. We're, we're very fresh into that, so, um, we'll see what the results are as we, as we finish up this, this year.
A big part with that was that, prior to that, we were waiting till the last two weeks of the year, and then doing a bootcamp thing and trying to, you know, figure out a way to save them at the very end, and it just, it's always just a little too late. And so catching them right away, so we were, I mean, the first week we had it, it was the first week of the quarter. So, of course, nobody's in there, 'cause everybody's starting at, you know, step one, and everybody's good. But then you just saw it didn't take long for a few kids, just, you know, especially late in the year, um, start to fall off the grid a little bit, and then just trying to get them back up and give them some motivation to get their stuff in. 'Cause a lot of times it's stuff, it's simple, it's just, it's just daily work. Stuff that they should be able to get, it's the easy part of their grade, and they just, they just don't do it. And it's like to incentivize it with them, you know, get that stuff turned in, you're gonna, you're gonna make it through. Otherwise, we're gonna have to figure out summer remediation and training and like that, and it just, you know, so hopefully that helps.
Uh, we're continuing with our Laker Wave Maker every week, um, more positive, or positive reinforcement. Uh, every week we select two to three kids that are nominated for those four, uh, or those mindful, accountable, and successful nominations. Next slide. Um, Mr. Rankin already kind of touched upon the Career Day, that was, that was awesome. Those are, those are our, our sponsors and, and folks that we went out to, that we sent seventh through ninth graders out to, and then they came in. A group, a group in the morning goes out off, off campus and goes and visits these locations, and then they completely flip where we have sites and, and businesses and, and representatives coming in to communicate with the kids. So that was, that was awesome to, uh, really connect with our community. And then May tenth for the high school, in the morning, we'll, we'll be doing our Day of Caring Day. So if you need anything, anybody knows anybody around the community that needs some extra help, raking leaves, cleaning up rocks, riprap, things of that nature, just let, uh, let the high school know. Um, curriculum work, we're still working with our curriculum, uh, and, and getting everything aligned with our curriculum review cycle. Sarah Sukie's doing a, a lot of the heavy lifting on that. Science, we're, we've purchased this year, they're working with, uh, the new curriculum that they purchased last, over this past summer. English will be new, or, uh, purchasing new this summer as well. So, um, in the very near future, we'll get everybody back caught up with, uh, with that curriculum re-, review cycle, which is, which is pretty exciting. And then in the high school level, we continue to work on that upperclassman flexibility, off, senior off-campus privileges. What does that mean? How can we grow that? The apprenticeship program, how can we continue to grow that? And then our co-op program is, is really where we're targeting that flexibility for our, our upper, upperclassmen. Next. Um, safe and welcoming is, is one of our, our goals, and, uh, it's been, it's been awesome to get to work with, with Deputy Tessing. Obviously, he's dealing with a, you know, a very difficult situation in, in Popeka, I mean, Sheriff's Department at this point in time. Um, but it's, it's been, it's night and day what it's been in the high school with him on, on site. And he's out in a positive manner, and he's not walking around trying to bust kids for this, that, and the other. He's walking around giving fist pumps and talking to kids in a very positive manner, um, and it's just, it's awesome to see. Uh, he and Brian Clausen, Deputy Clausen, spearheaded a internet security campaign that took place in February. Uh, we presented to, to seventh grade through twelfth grade students, and then we had a, a parent presentation as well, just on internet security. Snapchat, Facebook, Google, you name it. Cyberbullying, sexting, um, all the negatives that come with, with the device and technology. Um, it's, uh, it's, it's kind of a scary, scary deal, and, and kids are not, they're struggling with it. Um, and then, uh, obviously, uh, Deputy Tessing, myself are spearheading the, the Alice training, the new Alice. That's our, our crisis prevention plan, from the old school traditional lockdown to more, um, they have, staff has, has options. Next slide. Where are we going in the, in the future for our high school? We've, we've added a couple classes for, for immediately for next year in our registration packet. We'll see what the numbers, I'm, I'm, right now... And then obviously Deputy Tessing, myself are spearheading the, the Alice training and the new Alice, that's our, our crisis prevention plan. From the old school, traditional lockdown to more, they have, staff has, has options. Next slide. Where are we going in the, in the future for our high school? We've, we've added a couple of classes for, for immediately for next year in our registration packet. We'll see what the numbers, I'm, I'm right now developing the schedule. So it'll, it'll be based on the numbers of registration and, and obviously staffing. But we added three new classes, shop one-on-one, which is specifically geared towards students that maybe not, maybe don't always go into the shop classes, your traditional shop class student. Sports officiating we're offering and intro to drama and theater are our new classes. One thing that's come from our leadership teams and, and our, our, our TAT and our child study teams is, is interventions. Like I said, win time we've added, but just the continuing struggling of students and what we can do to help support our kids. And a small group of us, Mary Jen Ring, Lisa Rand and Tammy Williams Quiggle and I have been meeting for about three or four times now, following one of our TAT meetings a couple of months ago. Of what we can do at the high school level to really get a systematic approach to our, our intervention, getting everybody on the same page. So, so Mr. Benes isn't just kind of trying what he thinks is, he's just kind of thinking what works for him and I'm doing something and we're all doing something different. But to really try to tie those interventions into place. And then I believe the board was presented to a couple of board meetings ago by, who else was his name?
Was just Pons.
Stepanis, yes, on, on the Bavinji academies approach. And that is something that we are looking at, exploring for, for our high school as well. And what that means for, you know, it's not going to be the Bavinji academies, it's not going to be the Alock academies, it's going to be what, what, what can it look like in Minnewaska for our kids? We want to start small and with the goal of next year at this time, registration, that we will have some form of, of academies. And, and I just listed our three, kind of our three bigs that we would most likely try to start with is agriculture, manufacturing and healthcare. Because those are our three really bigs in our towns and our communities, so. And then the last bullet there, just hybrid and online learning option. You know, the, Mr. Rankin goes to Raid and the Alternative Learning Center up in Alexandria and the, the changes that are going on up there and what that looks like in the future. What that alternative learning setting looks like. We're, we continue to lose kids through online learning and, and area learning centers and things of that nature. And how can we, how can we get something going at our high school level to catch some of our kids that, that are living off, or in our district that are going to other schools and other online learning approaches? So what, what can we do here to, to possibly catch some of those kids as well?
I did, I did kind of ask Nate, there could be an additional class we are looking at offering and that'd be child administration. We did hire two teachers that do have on the license. I thought it was a, you know, I was lucky in my former district to offer that and I became the most popular class in the ninth grade and tenth grade. Because it's, but it is very difficult because, you know, it all sounds great to do that, but you're gonna have some people upset because, you know, freshmen don't get a lot of opportunities, they don't get a lot of choices. You know, so, but I, I can tell you it's very difficult when you have very active kids to try and get them behind the wheel, all, all, all the books. So, you know, in my previous district, we kind of, we took nine weeks. So we took kids and we would split them, some kids would get behind the wheel, all the other half would go down to shop and like know your car. Because there's a lot of kids that just don't know, like they're very foundational and I kind of laugh about, like, I think it's kind of ridiculous that we even, we even call school off sometimes. And we've kind of started with like almost ninety-nine point nine percent of our kids that are driving vehicles have access to a cellular device. There's not many places in our county where you wouldn't have any phone signal, probably wouldn't be in the ditch very long. But my point is, is like there's a lot of kids that don't maybe know safety things or how to troubleshoot cars and just trying to, to know themselves. It is something he's working on developing. But we do have some people who have experience and, and license to offer it, so I think it'd be a big one for our community.
Mr. Benes, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't think so.
I'm gonna just go off script for one minute. Mr. Rankin approved, I, I got the invitation as a Western Division principal to attend a national advocacy conference, March twenty-sixth through the thirtieth. And I was able to attend with seventeen other principals from the state of Minnesota, from elementary, middle school and high school. And we, we really went into DC for three kind of reasons, for K-12 budgeting, looking at CTE funding, title funding and special ed funding. School-based mental health, mental health for both staff and students. And then teacher preparation programs to figure out how we can get teachers in our building with our prep programs right now and then loan forgiveness. When we, when we get kids, younger staff or even staff that are veteran and have these loans to, to pay off what, what we can do to support that. So it was, it was a three-day conference capped off with us at the Capitol, visiting with three of our, our US senators and representatives. So I appreciate the board giving Mr. Rankin authority to allow that. It was, it was, it was a great experience and it was, it was great to, that's the first time I've kind of done something of that nature to advocate. It was, it was really cool, it was intimidating, but it was, it was really cool to be a part of that. So thank you.
I have a quick question, either one. With the kids that get into an academic intervention, are there any common themes why they get there? You know what I mean? Is it, is it home life, is it, they don't get a period?
Yeah, you see a lot of, a lot of it is, you know, kind of some perpetual absences, you know, I mean, even though, even though we're way better than we were before and we're getting into a steady stream. Detrancy is nowhere like it was sort of the last three years. But occasionally you'll have kids that just, you know, it's just three days a week, it's a, it's a big week for them instead of five, you know? And when you do that, you just start falling behind and then the avalanche kind of falls down and you just need some help and some time getting back on that. So that'd be a big one.
I, I, and, and I think, I mean, I'm not gonna just say it's all mental health, but, but the struggles that kids are having, just, I mean, we have some kids that struggle just to get to school. And, and they become so ill of being anxious of coming to school.
So, so hold on, they have trouble going to school because they're just wound tight?
Yes.
Emotionally, not like a physical thing, like they can't move to school or?
No, but it's a, it's a, it's, that is.
It's intimidation, just walking in the door.
Yep, that's one example. And then that causes the absenteeism. But like I said, that's, I'm not solely pointing it to that. But to go back to what Chris said, I would say absenteeism is, is absolutely one of the main factors of kids that do get on that, that list. And then it's just really the, the homework completion, would you not agree with? Just because they just, school means nothing, it's not gonna.
And there's some kids on that list that are there every single day. I mean, they're there every single day and that still, you know, even though like I'll remind a student, you know, ten times, really need that worksheet, that worksheet's gonna save you. You need to get that worksheet, you know, and it's, you know, I might as well be talking to that whiteboard or something, you know? You know, because, you know, and they'll be like, yeah, yeah, I got it, yeah, yeah. Do I need to give you another, sure, okay, great. But we're trying.
We're trying, yep.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thanks for the update. All right, moving on. Number eleven, activity director.
Thank you for the opportunity. I did not have anything other about, about, I think it's a winter activities there, but just a little bit about our winter activities for me as an activities director this year. Really having that first opportunity to go through the whole year. One of the things that I've, I've taken a lot of interest in and has gone really well is, is having a lot of conversations with our advisors and coaches throughout the year and be able to develop a system that works for us and our coaches. And I think as a result of having those, some of those conversations are tough and a lot of them are just to let them know that I care and, and just to get updates from them. But that has been a really positive thing for me in my position and I hope it has been as well for advisors and coaches to kind of on a regular basis be able to check in and talk about how things are going. Just moving into the spring season, we all understand what's, what's been going on. It's been, you know, surprisingly, we have had a few activities. I believe every one of our spring sports, probably except for trap shooting, have been able to have an actual competition of some type so far. And so we've been lucky to do that. Tracking field went to an indoor meet, they went to a meet last week in Newland and Spicer. Softball went to the North Star complex tonight. I've got a chance seven through twelve to play up there. They also, Pinzwell was able to put together a scrimmage last week, it wasn't an official game, but we were able to do it. Baseball played Fergus Falls today against Davis College. And so we just had a few of those opportunities. Tennis has had home and away, we hosted tomorrow night, we'll host again. So surprisingly, we've gotten a few things in, in between. Some of the things that are challenges in regard to this is, is the games that we have missed. We're not rescheduling them immediately unless they're a conference game. So non-conference games, which typically are the early part of your schedule, have kind of been left. And if we can get a chance to get those in, we're certainly going to try to do that. But there's a lot of rescheduling left to do. The thing that I'm really happy about is that the West Central Conference last, last spring decided that all baseball and softball conference games will be double headers this year. That allows us some flexibility with some additional nights to reschedule. Some of us split those double headers. For example, for us in baseball and softball, we split Morris because they're kind of a natural close by school. We split that already today. Morris and I said to make our game for softball, we did make it back to a double header, just because we had that flexibility to do so. Sometimes transportation can be an issue. I mean, if we have a lot of events going, ours has told me that we're not taking any more than four, maybe five buses in the evening to get somewhere, otherwise he just can't staff it. And, and so that's a, that's a problem. We had an opportunity, we discovered today, this afternoon, Mr. Mills and, and I were out on the softball fields and we got to the point where they're ready where we could host a game tomorrow night. And so I actually got West Central that's willing to come and play a conference game tomorrow night. He was able to figure out transportation, but I just got a text now, we've gone through six of umpire associations, cannot find umpires for a varsity softball game tomorrow. So there's, there's always hurdles that we're, we're trying to overcome and Nate talked about this officiating class. We just don't have a lot of young people getting into officiating and umpiring right now. And even with the state high school league making some adjustments where we could have a, a varsity baseball or softball game this year, as long as we have one registered official umpiring.
Sounds like me and Nate are umpiring tomorrow night.
Yeah. So anyway.
I did it for, I did it for three, four years. I remember how bad it is when you're trying to get them all in at the same time.
It is. So this week, we'll try and get that in tomorrow and it looks like we've got some poor weather coming again at the end of this week. And hopefully we can, after next week, we're really close, we're lucky with that weather that we did receive, there are a lot of things. But that snow disappearing, it changed things quickly. Even with the wind that we had today, there's drying, it takes place with that sunlight, so we're hoping to get to that point. Just a little bit on facilities, you know, we're, we're looking pretty good. I, just something that I talked to Mr. Rankin about, one of the things that I proposed to do when we first opened the school back when, when Holtberg and Reckman were in school, that area shaded the blue. We used to, we used to have a lot of practices out in that area, at the south end of our practice football fields. That area over the years, we haven't used it that much, the last ten years at the very minimum. There's a lot of little dips and valleys and gullies for washouts and sinkholes, kind of so to speak. What I'd like to be able to do is without going, you know, full into taking it down and grading it down, is to be able to get that back up to a point where it's safe to play, have junior high games, junior high practices, soccer practices. One of the things that's changed with junior high football is that we're making more an effort to play full games now instead of the forty-yard line and in, which is awesome, you know, if we're gonna make that change. But when you do that on a given night, you all of a sudden, you could use one field and now you're using two fields. And now you've got a JV in junior high and a varsity soccer practice and you've got, you've got varsity, JV and ninth grade football practice going on. And sometimes we'll send kids over to Barstas Park to play soccer. I like to get that area a little bit up to speed, so it's just safe by adding fill into certain areas, get a level now a little bit so we can have some games down there. Looked into the potential of adding a scoreboard at the, see at the south end of the practice football fields halfway between, that, that median part between the east and west field there. So we can have games, that scoreboard could be used if there was a game going on in either field, but obviously one at a time. And if we're able to get that south field into shape, we could put another scoreboard to the backside of it. So it's back to back and, and be able to use those for contests and just kind of free up other areas to give kids more opportunities. You'll see, you know, those little red lines that I've drawn there, it would be nice at some point, those are gravel paths. Years ago, that was a tar path down into the practice fields. Now it's just gravel, it's been dug up. And if we were to do that someday, I noticed this fall when we had junior high football games, the soccer games, a lot of grandmas and grandpas, people that's tough to get around and we're trying to wheel wheelchairs across that tall grass and the hill and, and I felt bad for them, you know? So if we could maybe down the road be able to have some type of a path that's accessible for some of our seniors, senior citizens, handicapped people to get down there. But just a, a little peek into a couple of things that maybe it's, we're able to do without spending a ton on. Minnesota State High School League came out with a new section and class placements. And before I get to that, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the West Central Conference. Over the years, the West Central Conference has been in existence since, I want to say in the fifties. It used to be Alexandria, Glanrod, Wilmer, you know, that was the core nucleus. And then it blew up to a point where we had a, a north and a south half. We went all the way from Lackaparl to Foley and Malacca. And then it's gone back down to what we've had the last few years where we have eight, eight schools right now. West Central just recently came back into the conference. But with the schools that we have, with the, you know, Melrose, Sox Center, Benewaska, Morris, Montevideo, Benson and West Central. Benson is really trying hard to get out of our conference and, and they've come to a dead end every time that they try to do this. The Camden Conference down south, they're, they're a very big conference, they're trying to get into that conference. I don't believe that it'll happen, but you just never know. Bold also, Bold is a class A school that's, obviously is those of you that follow activities closely, they've done pretty doggone well in our conference and I think it's paid dividends to them when they compete at their class. But there's a chance they could in the, in the next year or two, we leave in the conference, they've been invited to go back or go to a conference and forgive me, I forgot which conference it is. And they're the first choice of that conference to go back in. It would save them on average thirty-seven minutes every trip they take for conference games one way. So to say that that could happen, I would be wrong. We've talked to Osakis, we've talked to Newland and Spicer, neither of which aren't interested in being in our conference. And so there's a, there's a part of me that sometimes worries a little bit about, you know, where our conferences will go from here if we all of a sudden go down the six teams, how that would work. So just a little update there in the conference, we have a conference meeting on Wednesday where the ADs will get together and kind of discuss how we're gonna get out of our spring of a mess here. But, but that's all for the West Central Conference. Section realignment and class realignment. We only had one activity at Benewaska that changed classes and that was wrestling. They went from class A to class two A. So that meant they went from section five A, which is a dominant loaded section with, with wrestling teams, to section eight double A. And if you go down, those are the schools now right there that will be a part of section eight double A for wrestling. But that was the only activity here at Benewaska that, that changed class. As we go down to football, right there, I know that that's been an interesting topic to a lot, but our enrollment was at three fifty-one, the cutoff line is three twelve to go from class three A to two A. And so we're kind of secure in there. I know that we have a couple of big classes going through the high school. Could that change in the next, the next realignment? Possibly. But as you look there, that's, that's a pretty tough section for section six double A, yes.
One quick question for people that might be watching, is win included on that number?
It is. A portion of that, there's, there's numbers that have to go in there, but they're separated. I don't know the exact details of how that works, but when I have to do the report for the state high school league, comes from the Mars report. There's a certain. There's a certain, they, they do take a look at that, but I don't know how that goes into the.
I think, I believe, my personal feeling is the only kids that win the count are, are five resident pupils. So there are five kids that attend to win.
I know that gets to be in some circles that kind of gets a little loud.
Because the way we work is we get tuition billing for those kids. They, they remain residents of their, their school district. So.
And they can still play athletics.
They can play sports.
Players. So everybody knows the answer.
I would share though that, you know, if I go back up to my superintendent report, you know, like I think, what was the cutoff for football?
Three twelve.
See, I think, what's our enrollment?
Three fifty-one.
Yeah. And I think the wrestling was three twenty-nine was the cutoff. And we're three fifty-one, or a minute and three twenty-five. My personal feeling, and I've told like the wrestling people, I think we'll be in eight double A for the next six years. Because you got the eight, largest classes still sitting down in the eighth grade. And so, you know, we're going to be in for two years. Then they'll redraw it. Those all the big classes will still be in the school. They'll redraw it. And then it'll be at the tail end when the eighth graders are probably juniors or seniors that will still be stuck in it. And because, you know, the problem is a lot of alt state schools are dropping populations way faster than we are. Our enrollment's almost like, and we have kindergarten classes of ninety-four right now. And I think there's seventeen kids at Glacier. That's going to be a, a class of a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and twenty. You know, so I mean, like we are going to stay, our enrollment's not. You go out to our friends in Lackawar and Ortonville, like they are quickly going down. So. Now, there could be a bunch of co-ops that could, that's a lot. The other thing is I was told, and Phil can tell you more, but I was also like wrestling's a big co-op sport. They're going to start counting everyone else.
Yeah, that's, that was one thing that was discussed. Also a recent activities director conference.
So like you take example like, yeah, Morris might be smaller than our enrollment, but when you start taking Morris, Hancock, Chicago, Alberta, Browerville, Long Prairie, well, when you take a taller enrollment, that would catapult them over us. So I'd be, I say that and I say it tongue in cheek because it, it, it could change a lot of things. And I think they're going to take their previous lunch rate off. So, you know, my previous district, or a long time ago, but, you know, but Midge likes playing that card. So they're typically, they, enrollment, they'd probably be a three A school, but they get to be in a lot of double A events because their future lunch rate helps decline whatever factor they use.
Mr. Rankin, back up to that. Just a few others. Just change it. Dance went from section four A to two A. Volleyball, section three double A to six double A, which that was a little interesting. Swimming went from class for section six A to eight A. Then all other, all other activities stayed the same. We will not know. They have not given us the new football districts yet. We will not know that until May. And then once the districts are, are given, then they will create the schedules. So we have no nine through twelve football schedules yet. And we can't until we know all of those details. So I wouldn't expect any of that till the end of May.
Is that common for it to be the end of May?
Not this, not, not this late, but I think because of all the realignment and then once the realignment takes place, then they, there are some district changes that have to be placed. And I just listed some things here for those of you that are interested. That's, that's the new volleyball, six double A section from three A, which was down south. So, yep. And new dance, two A. That's when the guy went to two eight. Yeah. Any questions?
Not a question, but a comment, you know, for the state high school league. When, and we just happen to be one of those schools that's always on the line, it seems. How divisive that is to rivalries. I mean, when you're over here and then you're over there and then you're up there. I mean, it just really makes it tough. You know? It just is what it is. But, and I, I think that hurts attendance because, you know, if you know people from Benson or Morris, you probably played against them and their kid's probably on the team, right? You're not going to somebody's far fetched Rockford.
That was one of the things that was discussed too, because I, I talked to a couple of the people in charge of developing the new districts for football. And, and I just said, we would much rather play schools closer to us within our same range than. That was Rockford. It was the one I brought up.
Exactly.
Howard Lake Waverly. I mean, those are.
Wrestling is from here to the Canadian border.
Right? It's never going to be the way it was when we were young, which is unfortunate.
Bring them on.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Otherwise, thank you for everything you've done. All right, moving on to number twelve. We need to consider the approval of designation of identified officials with authority for the Minnesota Department of Education external user access recertification system.
Yeah, you need to, I, I, I have to approve this because this is how we do all the secure appointments to let her have access to special ed, him have access financial aid stuff, her to do all the approvals for him to do. So it's, it's for a one-year obligation, but it basically says I'm in good standing to appoint people in the district. So I'm the Iowa. So please recommend approval.
All right. Any motions?
I think I'm down in five days.
I'll make a motion.
Motion and second have been received. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number thirteen, request to consider approval of resolution reducing and discontinuing additional education programs and positions for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and beyond.
These current positions are all funded by the, for the access grant. We've resubmitted the grant back in February. You should know the results by the end of May. It's not a guarantee we're going to get it. But unfortunately, because all these staff positions are funded by grant dollars, this is an annual event that you need, you got to take action on. So these teachers aren't really notified that they're going to be non-renewed. And then once we get the grant, we'll, you'll, you'll very likely be approving a bunch of positions in either June or July.
All right. Any questions?
I believe there's a roll call votes after this. Right?
Yep, after this. So with that being said, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion received. Any seconds?
All second.
Go with Zach on that one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Number fourteen, termination and non-renewal of staff.
So this is actually taking a motion identifying individuals.
All right. So starting with terminating district title one staff pending federal funding for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Are there any questions on this? Are there any motions?
I can make a motion.
Motion by Zach. Seconded by Holtberg. All right. T. Reichman, yes. Holtberg?
Yes.
A. Reichman?
Yes.
Legred?
Yes.
Motion carries. Termination and non-renewal of alternative learning program coordinator, Mirabeth Noyes. Entertain a motion for this action item.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by A. Reichman. Any seconds? Second by Holtberg. Roll call vote. T. Reichman, yes. Legred?
Yes.
Holtberg?
Yes.
A. Reichman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Termination and non-renewal of four through eighth grade interventionist Brian Gruber. I'd entertain a motion for this.
I can make a motion.
Motion by Legred. Any seconds?
All second.
Second by A. Reichman. Roll call vote. T. Reichman, yes. Legred?
Yes.
Holtberg?
Yes.
A. Reichman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Termination and non-renewal of four through eight interventionist Casey Duvier. Entertain a motion for this action item.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Holtberg. Second by?
All second.
Second by Legred. Roll call vote. T. Reichman, yes. Legred?
Yes.
Holtberg?
Yes.
A. Reichman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Termination and non-renewal of K three interventionist Becky Reber. Entertain a motion for this action item.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by A. Reichman. Entertain a second. Anybody second?
All second.
Second by Legred. Roll call vote. T. Reichman, yes. Legred?
Yes.
Holtberg?
Yes.
A. Reichman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Termination and non-renewal of K through interventionist Bobby Joe Johnson. I'd entertain a motion for this action item.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Legred. Any seconds?
All second.
Holtberg, seconds. Roll call vote. T. Reichman, yes. Legred?
Yes.
Holtberg?
Yes.
A. Reichman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Termination and non-renewal of district assignment coordinator Deborah Mathias. Entertain a motion for this action item.
I'll make a motion.
A. Reichman, entertain a second. Any seconds?
All second.
Holtberg, seconds. Roll call vote. T. Reichman, yes. Legred?
Yes.
Holtberg?
Yes.
A. Reichman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Termination and non-renewal of K three interventionist Stephanie Stone. Then I'd entertain a motion for this action item.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Legred. Any seconds?
Second.
Second by Holtberg. Roll call vote. T. Reichman, yes. Legred?
Yes.
Holtberg?
Yes.
A. Reichman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Consider approval of the motion of understanding with Amergrammels. For this action item, I'd entertain a motion. Any motions?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by A. Reichman. Any seconds?
I can second.
Legred, seconds. Roll call vote. T. Reichman, yes. Legred?
Yes.
Holtberg?
Yes.
A. Reichman?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Number sixteen. Considering the approval of a contract with Green Lawns for turf care.
So we've been working, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of board. We've been working every year. We've been, you know, we, we've used Green Lawns turf care. The, the significant thing you can just take a look at, it, it is, you know, like anything else, it's definitely not up in price. But it is definitely the cheapest in the area and the best quality for the dollar. But tonight, you know, our recommendation is we're going to approve this, the quote. And there's going to be three different quotes. So you have turf care and within the bid, you're going to get each campus and then our baseball fields. And I know I, I work pretty close with Mr. Mathias here. There's a lot of different things that go on and I don't know, we've used them for, or they've been the cheapest. So I recommend his approval. I've had Jeremy on this and we've done some good research. And so we're recommending approval tonight for green turf, uh, green lawns turf care.
All right. Are there any questions regarding the contract?
Sort of later, we are going to get grass and then, well, pretty soon we're going to get weeds first, like my old yard. Grass will come maybe at some point.
All right. No questions. Looking to entertain a motion. Motion by Holtberg. Any seconds?
All, go ahead.
I'll second.
Second by A. Reichman. All those in favor of the contract signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number seventeen, consent calendar.
Hi, Mr. Vice Chair, members of board. I recommend approval for these positions listed. You have a junior high baseball coach. I think we have like, please correct me if I'm wrong. How many baseball players you got, Drew?
There's like thirty-five.
Yeah, seventh and eighth grade. Yeah. So we, we have one combined team. So we're trying to get some extra help. And then you have Olympic McDonald's school age childcare assistant. And so just make sure I'm correct. But I think this is for
After school.
After school program, right? Yeah. So I make sure I was sharing these two. And then we're Paul Schmitz is technically an early childhood teacher coordinator. As I mentioned earlier, it's my board report. We're getting that from Bruton. Very, yeah, very high quality. So we're very lucky there. And then the recognition you see there, I think I, I mentioned the personal committee, but a top philosopher, so Mrs. John Zurbis, she's going to go work in the private sector and then recommending tonight for many, many, many years of service for our district, our IT department, Steve Samper, who retired about five. I recommend approval of the consent calendar.
All right. Any questions for Superintendent Rankin? Otherwise, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Legred. Any seconds?
All second.
Second by Holtberg. All those in favor of the consent calendar signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Diplomas at commencement. If anybody's able to be at that, I'd more than welcome to get your information to Angie so she can accommodate that. And number nineteen, any other thing anybody needs? Any other questions? Otherwise, number twenty.
Chris, can I just? I don't want to put you on the spot, but is there any chance between you and Mary? You have a, I just want to plan the calendar. I know Taste of the Lake is coming up on March, sorry, May?
Ten.
May tenth? End of the year recognition, thinking on the seventeenth?
Twenty-fourth.
That's twenty-fourth. Okay. So.
Do you want any other, like backglow at those kinds of dates?
Anything that, anything that would involve the board. It's like we've asked the board to be at the end of the year recognition and retirement. So that's been the twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
On the seventh, on the tenth is the Taste of the Lake.
Yep.
Any other events?
Well, you're always welcome to come to the honors or the scholarship program on the fourteenth. Backglow at on the third, which it's nice to have people there that represent. You don't have to, but you know, those are some other dates for seniors.
So graduation on the night of the twenty-sixth.
Yep.
We have the end of the year recognition and retirement on the twenty-fourth. We have the Taste of the Lake on the tenth. We have Day of Caring on the tenth. So if you know any projects in the community that would be beneficial, that'd be great. I would share that discipline that we're going to have at a meeting at seven thirty to just make sure we're prepared for Officer Owen being on our campus. I, I want to really thank the kids. I asked some teachers today to just help with, you know, things bringing, and I think our actual downsides are really good. Tomorrow, they're going to spend a lot of time on our campus, making sure all the last soul approval and getting everything cleaned up around here. What we're going to work through, because I, I was told we can anticipate a minimal of a thousand, fifteen hundred just police officers here on Saturday, maybe Friday and Saturday. Because they all like to drive separately. We don't have really room for fifteen hundred cars. So we're going to work, get that synchronized. There's going to be a command center here. Just having enough chairs. I have the food service preparing a meal for Friday nights and the board. I recommend that you sponsor. You have the funds to do it. I know we had to cancel some events for Saturday. Oh, I, I sent a text out to the board chair. We're at early release on Friday. We're going to do twelve thirty for the elementary. We're going to do one o'clock for the high school. You know, I have staff staying until the end of the day just to make sure we've got everything ready. We're also going to have some help because you're going to have a lot of people coming around our campus. I reached, I talked to Nick and talked to some other people who get involved here because, you know, I have, I've got four different police officers that have texted me the last few days. But there's, they have, there obviously is a well-oiled machine for them, but, you know, they've got the, the Red Bull County Sheriff's Department. They're handling all the police officers here. They're going to come here and go on our, to a gym on Saturday morning. I got another group coming from, I need to get the litrature. He's one of my students. He's in charge of all the actual events. There's, you sent me a text. There's another group. I would just, I would anticipate Trevor's funeral is a very large event. I'm not going to say this is going to be twice as many, but we could get overwhelmed just the internet, I mean, national attention on flowers and donations and and who knows? I, I wouldn't describe the governor here on Saturday for all I know. But we're going to try to get everything set up. So I just want to share with everybody that, yeah. So, I just wanna share with everybody that, uh, yeah, we're gonna work through it.
Nate, you know, put two baseball people on the spot, that are just coming back, so we can get an update from the baseball team?
Yeah, they won.
Did they win?
They won twelve to one.
There you go. Nice.
All the way back from St. Peter.
For me, uh, for the members of board, uh, I'll be here this week, but I, I'm gone in France, the first week in May. Uh, and I did get, I don't know if I have to go this, but I don't know what's going on in the world, but I, I am getting called the National Training Center, uh, in California, the fifteenth to the seventeenth. Don't, not going to war, or China, anything like that, I shouldn't even say that, but, um, I, I may not be, we may need to move the board meeting on the fifteenth to the twenty-second, or I can maybe try to move in, uh, second, so we'll work that out in the next twenty-four hours. But I, I would just recommend that we potentially move this to the, the May board meeting for the twenty-second, worst case scenario. We use this a very short one, because we have graduation anyway, but there might have, other people might have conflicts, but we'll work through that next couple of days. Other than that, um.
I mean, we're thinking of so many reminders about the list, they're just.
I'll, I'll put it on the calendar.
All right.
Yeah, we'll get everybody a calendar, it might, there's just a lot of new parts as we get to June, and then it goes dormant, and then, the only other thing is, I, I, we will have the financing facilities committee, just traveling to Albany tomorrow, look at their, their campus and their facility, and then we will be having a retreat, uh, a leadership retreat on the thirtieth or thirty-first of May, uh, and, and we have done a lot of work, uh, on the front end to get, uh, a potential November, uh, election, uh, special election to renew our, our. Four. You have a date here? Well, I think they'll be back before next Monday. You'll have all the construction timelines, and all that, so, yeah, just be a lot of new parts in the next, sorry, let's check.
All good. Any other questions? Otherwise, we'll to the, uh, time of the night where we can think about adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right. Any seconds?
All second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries.